Okay, the next regular meeting is scheduled for June 10th, 2008. Just to note, there will be no meeting on May 27th, 2008. Here we are, next on the agenda is acceptance of minutes from March 25th, 2008. We have, we need to table that, table the acceptance is not ready to be voted on, not ready to be viewed. Other matters? Andrew Wetmore would like to read a statement into record.
I, Commissioner Wetmore, would like to go on record to address the complaints made by my, about my actions after the April 8th, 2008 meeting. I apologize if my untimely exit of the building was misinterpreted as myself having inappropriate conversation with the petitioner or the Hallis family. I was not traveling with the Hallis family nor had I had ever met or had any prior interactions with the family or the petitioner prior to the presentation of the petition and meeting on April 8th, 2008.
We have no new public hearings scheduled for this evening. We have no continuations of public hearings. We have, number one, under old business for consideration and possible action. Number one is the petition of Michael J. Hallis, DVA to amend section 4A 5F 9 of the zoning regulations, clarify farming operations permitted in the RA zones. Public hearing was closed on the 8th of April. We have 65 days to make a decision. That period will be up on June 12th, 2008. It's not necessary to make a decision this evening. Eligible to vote are Commissioners DiCaprio, who is absent this evening, Commissioner Hadad, Commissioner Johnston, Commissioner Jowdy, Commissioner Manisek, Commissioner Malillo, Commissioner Stremiello, and Commissioner Wetmore. Commissioner Hickey, alternate Commissioner Hickey is eligible to vote this evening as she has viewed the, she has viewed the hearing. So I'm going to ask this evening that Commissioner Vicki sit in for Commissioner DiCaprio for the Michael J. Hallis petition.
You, yeah, I was gonna mention that you're also eligible.
And I too am also eligible. Just a, just a quick reminder, we are live on Government Access, Channel 24. Please use your microphone and speak loudly and clearly at all times, including voting. If you'd like to see yourself on TV later tonight, it'll be replayed at 10 o'clock. We have any decision, any decision making on this this evening? Commissioner Johnston?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the petition for following reasons. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the city. I do not believe that this is being presented in the proper forum. It's my opinion that this may even verge on contract zoning, which would not be legal. Outside, I believe that it will create a traffic hazard, potential danger to both other vehicles and pedestrians on the route.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, I will second this motion for the, only the purpose of discussion. We don't need discussion on this petition, on this motion. Yes, Commissioner Johnston?
Well, I'd just like to bring up that, as I stated in my motion, I believe that this is not the right forum for this proposal. It is not citywide change. This is specific only to the said property and changing it may set precedent for others to attempt to change citywide zoning for individual specific needs. Mr. Elkhorn put it at the previous meeting that this is a farm and not a transfer station, which is an excellent point, but when will the transfer station or other such entities use this as a precedent to change the wording in their zone? I believe this was a, there's a viable reason that the regulation was written as it was and we may very well be committing what I believe is contract zoning from how I've read it, but I haven't gotten heard back on that in specific. I don't see where this usage is beneficial nor is it safe for the public. I think that it's a very dangerous road. I've walked the property, I've walked the road there, and I don't think that it's, I think it's very hazardous how it's laid out and I don't see how it would be changed in the better.
Any more discussion? Yes, Commissioner Malillo?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I'm actually going to disagree with Commissioner Johnston on this matter and just announce that I am going to vote against his motion to deny for a couple of reasons. First of all, based on the presentation in the public hearing, the majority of the presentations were either in favor or on the fence, neither against nor in favor of this petition, with the exception of one individual who did have some arguments against it, but a lot of those seem to stem against public notice and things along those lines. And as, at that night, a lot of discussion was centered around site-specific issues, not rather ordinance or amendment changes, and as was pointed out that night at 5:00, it was also based on things that could be handled in the planning commission and not by us. So under those aspects, this is, I am going to vote no on this petition.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Jowdy?
Commissioner, I'm also against the motion. It seems that, you know, some things are site-specific, some things aren't. This whole discussion actually got to be site-specific. You know, the people are afraid of the traffic, this, that. I think the bottom line is that we have a Denver person that wants to continue farming. I think it's a die and breathe. I'd like to keep it going, my own opinion, and I'm going to take a stand and vote no to the motion.
Any other, any other discussion? Commissioner Johnston?
For clarity, I am not against the Hallises or the Hallis farm. I don't, I would love to see them continue to do it. The main reason why I brought this up is that, in fact, I'm being argued against that this is a, was deemed or argued as a site-specific amendment or that it was taken up this way. It was, it is site-specific. There's no doubt about it. The presentation that was put before us was specifically, did have no connotation towards any other property. It came up here, it was an infomercial that was put forward to project the benefits of this particular piece of property, no others. That was it. It was talked about for this piece. To say that the argument, the argument was put forward site-specifically and then every counter-argument was tried to be forced away under the pretext that it was being argued on a site-specific. Like I said, I have anything against farming or that specific farm. My point is, the general welfare, the amendment changes some of the wording that was written into the original zoning for a specific reason. And, you know, I don't want to go, go on and on about it, but I mean, you know, in fact, if people have fallen by there, the traffic that comes in and out there with trucks offloading things in there and coming around, it's a very dangerous corner. And it's my opinion that it's, that's a public hazard and it's dangerous. And then, one other note that I would like to bring up too, in the, in my opinion, I was very upset by the bullying and the intimidation and the outright abuse of members of the public who came to this forum to speak. This is not an act that should ever be tolerated in this forum. Behavior that went on, there was behavior in the parking lot, which was brought up by Commissioner Wetmore, but there were, while I was out there, I heard people being harassed outside and there was people being intimidated in here who may likely have intimidated other people from speaking. You know, people came up here and spoke about other people to speak before they had even gotten up here. And this is not, if you bring a motion before this committee, the public's allowed to speak pro and for it and also against it without fear of retribution from the petitioner or anybody else. And I found that to be a rather, you know, I don't know how many other people may have spoken against it, but feared that they were going to be dragged down and have their properties brought up or have their personal lives thrown up in front of this. And I, and I was very upset with that from my standpoint. But that aside, you know, I understand some of the, some of the speech by the, by the other commissioners. My point is, I think in the end, there's only one place that this petition holds to. So to say that it's not site-specific is wrong. It's erroneous. There's, there's no other place in the city that it pertains to. So we're talking about one site. Let's, let's be honest about that. We can hide, we can veil it, in other words, but this is the only place that it's ever going to pertain to. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, you, turn your mic on, please. Commissioner Harris?
I'm just wondering why that property would be more dangerous, the traffic in and out of that property would be more dangerous than any other business on that road?
Because you're going to have people, in my opinion, shopping on one side, getting stuff on the other side of a very dangerous corner. If it was a big long straightaway, it might be different, but it's not, and it's, and there's no way to, to change that. Have you seen the, the corner where the roads enter and stuff? If there's trucks dropping off mulch over there, if there's people filling up pickup trucks and crisscrossing, if there's people walking from one side of the road to the other to retrieve their goods, you know, this isn't, if it's just for storage, but if it's going to retail stuff out of there, which was specified here, then people are going to cross the street. And that corner is very blind and it's a 45 mile an hour zone where people come around. And because things are 45, doesn't mean that people go 45. And I don't want to see a 40 mile an hour zone, whatever it is. What I don't want to see is somebody get hurt on that corner. The original zoning was written so that it didn't cross roads. We're changing this for one specific place, no other place, no, not other businesses, this one. And it's on a dangerous corner.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll close the discussion, go to a, go to a vote. Okay, now, just so everyone understands, an a vote denies the motion, I'm sorry, denies the petition, okay? An nay vote does not deny the petition. An i vote is in favor of the petition, in favor of the motion which is denying the petition. Everyone clear on that? Eloquent vote. Yes, lack of eloquence.
Mr. Chairman, if I may for clarification, in other words, I think what you're saying is, if we vote no on this motion, we are not denying this petition, we are, we will still get a positive recommendation, a positive motion for this petition.
That is incorrect. You would be making a motion, if you vote no, you would be making a motion to deny the negative recommendation. You will not make a positive recommendation.
We will need to make a motion to make a positive recommendation.
We, we are not, we would still need, if this is...
A no, a yes vote denies it.
We still need a vote, okay? Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Jowdy?
Let me try to clarify it because I'm confused here. There is a motion on the floor to deny the petition, okay?
That's correct.
If you vote yes, you're voting to deny the petition.
That's correct.
If you vote no, you're voting to, against the motion.
That's correct. Thank you, Commissioner Jowdy, that was eloquently put. Okay, let's begin the festivities. Okay, just so you remember, Commissioner Hickey is in, filling, filling in for Commissioner DiCaprio. Okay, Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickey?
No.
Commissioner Hadad?
No.
Commissioner Jowdy?
No.
Commissioner Manisek?
No.
Vice Chairman Malillo?
No.
Commissioner Stremiello?
No.
Commissioner Wetmore?
No.
And I too will vote no. Okay, now what we need is a motion to approve. Commissioner Stremiello?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the petition of Michael Hallis to amend section 4A 5F of the zoning regulations and add all the proposed language allowing an existing farm to use adjacent property zone RA 40 or RA 80. I make this motion because of the positive recommendation from the planning commission and the majority of positive support at the public hearing held April 8th, 2008. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Malillo. Any discussion? Commissioner Hadad?
Please do repeat the last recent part of your motion.
If you could, turn your mic on, please.
Last part?
If you can, repeat the last part of your motion.
Sure. I made the motion because of the positive recommendation from the planning commission and the majority of positive support that was shown at the public hearing held on April 8th of 2008.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Johnston?
Well, in light of the fact that it would appear that this motion may go through, what I would like to do is put some constraints on it. I don't think that, in view of the dangerous area that it is, since the products intended for retail sale, farm machinery and operations of the farm may be temporarily stored, that's the way the new amendment reads. So what I would like to add to it would be that there is no customers allowed on the property, that all equipment must be stored inside of permanent structures, and all products must be stored inside, all products must be stored inside of permanent structures.
Okay, can you repeat that, please?
Yes, I would like to add to the amendment, since it says it's for the temporary, this is the new wording, it may be for the temp, for temporarily stored, operation of the farm may be temporarily stored on a lot zoned RA 40, which lies adjacent but separated from a lot. I would like to add that there are no customers on the property, that all the equipment must be stored inside of permanent structures, and that all products must be stored inside of permanent structures.
Okay, just for some clarification, Dennis, Commissioner Johnson is proposing to add some items to the proposed amendment.
Can I repeat that?
So he need, he says, Dennis, Dennis mentioned that Commissioner Johnson needs to specify where, he needs to add these to the proposed amendment. Commissioner Hadad?
Yeah, Mr. Johnston, may I ask for some clarity on some things that may assist you in inserting these?
Sure, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know that the public hearing is closed and we can't accept any public comment, but yet I still can go with your permission to the planning director for clarification of the specific underlying areas in this, in this petition, 4A F 5 specifically 9. Mr. Elkhorn, if I may, I'm noticing that, I read through eight and the second paragraph too, at the last paragraph, and I'm noticing as written, it says, "Products intended for retail sales permitted subsection 8 above and farm machinery used for the operation of the farm may be temporarily, temporarily stored." Going up to paragraph 8, which is in existence right now, it discusses, it discusses the sale on abutting parcels, but since this has been needed adjacent and not abutting, that takes care of that. But my question here is, it says may be temporarily stored, it does not say anything about the actual sale of that product. Now, I'm noticing on the planning commission recommendation, their reason for approval is, this will not change any of the existing regulations of governed farming, will allow existing farms to use adjacent property to store products and machinery. They don't discuss the sale of it either. Now, my question to you would be, what is, what is the actual intention of this? We did discuss during the public hearing that there may be a possibility of 8 or 10 or 12 percent of the consumer visiting the site to pick up goods, but does that actually say that in this? I don't see where it says that. It says, "May be temporarily stored on a lot zone." It says, "Products intended for retail sale may be temporarily stored on a lot." It doesn't say, "Products intended for retail sale may be temporarily stored and sold from that lot." So my question is, if the word at the end of, where it says, "May be temporarily stored", inserted but not sold on a lot zoned RA 40 or RA 80, does that help some of the negative opinion while accomplishing an approval for the petitioner? I think maybe some of the concerns about the road and the traffic is the customer going back and forth across the street. So to allow the storage and to allow this, I don't want to call it expansion, because as you know, by our own regulation, we're not allowed to expand and not perform a use. But this is a petition, so we can accomplish, I think, a scenario where the petitioner can see an approval for what they need for their business, yet this commission can then go a step further and protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens by not actually seeing a cash register on-site ringing up jars of honey and mulch. So what is it exactly, is the intention of this paragraph? Are sales intended on this?
I think that, as I've read it, it is certainly open to interpretation, that it would not allow for people to go over there and actually pick up stuff. It's for storage. But secondly...
Good day.
I would not vote on this tonight if you wish to make amendments of this nature. This is, I was not aware of these amendments coming. Unless they are very simple, I would be careful about making something out of the cuff. I have no idea where they would be inserted.
Could I, you asked that before and I can answer that question if you'd like.
Well, I'm not asking a question. What I'm saying is that I think there should be some time to properly draft that for insertion. It doesn't need to change it, it needs simply to draft it, which I think we, at which time we can best share concern.
Well, I'm only inserting three words, temporarily stored is already there, but not sold.
Well, he's the one made the motion.
Well, maybe he likes mine better than his.
And all I would like to specify there, and I do like what he said, my, my point was that no, no outdoor storage of said products and machinery in the last line, maybe closer than 40 feet from the line, and then I would say that, you know, no outdoor storage of products and machinery, may, must, you know, or products and machinery in the last line, that's where I would correct what I said. However, if need be to rewrite it and make it clear and to address my concerns and Commissioner Hadad's concerns, and to still give ample opportunity to everybody else who wants to approve this, I think that we can, we can mollify everybody by rewriting the amendment and then revoting it after it's written.
Well, you're not rewriting it, you're making an amendment on the floor to the petition.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Malillo?
Mr. Elkhorn, a quick question. If, if we were to make an amendment on the floor to this petition and along the lines that was suggested this evening, would that qualify as a substantial change and have to reopen the public hearing, would that go through without the public hearing?
That's something else I would like to check.
In my opinion, I think it's merely clarifying what's written, but that's, that's why I made that.
Which mine.
It's a very broad amendment and that's what we were trying to...
Yeah, and I don't have anything in front of me to refer to, and so I'm not going to make the ruling.
Mr. Chairman, let me just clarify my position. I'm a fan of the petition.
Yes, Commissioner Hadad?
I'm a fan of the petition. I'm not suggesting that we do anything with Mr. Johnson or I'm not speaking for anybody else here. I'm only raising my concerns that I just didn't want to see, you know, a store exactly the same on one side of the street as on the other. And as you know, this petition survives the property owner, okay? And I know that the Hallises, they're a good family, they have good intentions, and they run a very nice operation, but what happens if someday it's not Hallis Farming owner, that could be a store, unless we clarify the petition this evening. So that's all I'm speaking of. I think we can accomplish the goals that they wanted to be by expanding through the storage of what they'd like to put over there, and everybody can be happy. That's all. I wasn't speaking for anyone else, and I wouldn't be in favor of Mr. Johnson's attaching that to the motion for, you know, for us to do what to vote on. I'm relatively a fair petition. And my concern, that's it.
Yes, Commissioner Jowdy?
I understand the concerns of Commissioner Johnston, but Hallis came and the petition said to amend a section 4A 5F of zoning regs. The petition was put on the floor, it was a denial motion, and it didn't pass. And then we put a motion to approve, and it was approved to amend section 4A 5F.
It was not approved.
We, we haven't voted on that.
Oh, we won't?
We have not voted on that motion. We're still in discussion on the approval of the motion.
Okay, right, okay. So now there's a motion to do that. If it's approved, then it's basically being approved or denied as the, wait, as the petition came to the floor, okay?
Why not?
It's not, it's not necessitated that it's that way. We can, we can amend the motion, that's what discussion is for. We can, we can amend the motion to clarify it, to make it more powerful for the people of the city and for the people on this commission.
My concern...
It's not, it's not, it's not a yes or no, but it doesn't have to be.
My concern is, can we amend it? And if we do, let's try to, like Commissioner Hadad said, try to understand the intent of the applicant and what he was going for. Maybe not give him everything, but I think it's a little strict in what you had recommended, Commissioner Johnston.
And if I might ask of the chair, in what way, which is too strict? Perhaps I can amend my...
They had, they had originally said that their biggest concern was to store mulch over there. Now, you're saying any products has to be inside a building. That's virtually, you know, impossible unless you want to look at a big, huge building like you have on Sandpit that stores sand. I mean, so he, he, I don't think he wants to put a market and sell little pieces or, like Commissioner Hadad said, you know, jars of this or that, but he, he wants to have a truck go over there and get mulch.
All right, so were I to, for the sake of discussion, say that no customers were allowed on the property, as Mr. Hadad would know, and products would be stored in, what I'm, what I'm trying to get away from, my thought, is to get away from enormous piles of, so if we had a height limit of some sort, 10-foot height on the piles of mulch, so that we didn't have another visual obstruction or another visual entity. And as far as the equipment being stored on there, I thought that that would be something that should be stored in a, in a permanent structure, but, you know, but I could be dissuaded from my thought that the, that the mulch need be stored in a permanent structure were that stored in a manner that didn't, you know, that didn't become a 70-foot high, you know, pile of wood debris or whatever it is. So I mean, I could, if, say, say it was stored in piles of no more than, you know, 10-foot or something like that, I could probably, I could live with that without the permanent structure, and I would change my amendment to read that way.
Chairman...
Mr. Chairman, one...
Commissioner Malillo?
I'm curious now to look at, perhaps to help expedite this along the ways. Are we on a amendment to this motion? If so, has that amendment been motioned and seconded and therefore warranting discussion to vote on that amendment? Or are we on discussion of the original motion?
I think we're still in the discussion of the original motion with, with concerns about what I've written down, basically no customers and height restrictions is what I'm hearing. I guess the permanent structure is, is going... I guess the permanent structure is, is going by the wayside from what I'm listening to. For the storage of all, everything in permanent structures.
Of materials on the property. I would, I would remove that from, if that's the inhibition to, I, I'll remove the, all products must be stored.
Clarification you're looking for, Commissioner Malo?
Well, I was just wondering if we were going to be entertaining a motion to amend this motion or not, because if we're not going to be entertaining a motion to amend this motion, then we may not have to prolong the meeting to another meeting. I was just looking for clarification, because the discussion on this motion has kind of seemed, in my mind, got away from a long, a large section from the original motion. I'm just a little unsure right now as to whether or not we're actually talking about amending this motion or we're talking about the original motion in itself. And I would like some clarification on what the discussion is right now.
I believe the original motion is being discussed. Commissioner Stromiello.
My original motion was to put this through, add all the proposed language, as written, yes, and seconded as well, and then we went into discussion.
Our, this is all part of him under discussion, isn't it?
So we have voted on anything...
Chairman, actually...
Commissioner Haddad.
But Mr. Johnson asked the motion maker if he would like to amend his motion. The motion maker didn't say no, and that, that clears Mr. Johnson right off the bat. If that's what's happening, I mean, I'm all entitled to how it's been done. If that's what you want to do, tell him that you're not willing to attach that to your amendment. It's over with.
Well, if we...
Commissioner Stromiello, would you like to entertain any of these amendments to your motion?
No.
Chairman, I'd like to ask...
Commissioner Haddad.
He could, he would like to amend his motion to, at the end of the word where it says, "may be temporarily stored," to amend his motion to simply say, "but not sold." And he has the right to say yes or no. And I will vote for that.
You can clarify where that, where that is placed.
Products intended for retail sale as permitted in subsection 8 above and farm machinery used for the operation of the farm may be temporarily stored, insert but not sold on a lot zone already, or already part of already... If you want to clarify that further, but not sold from that site. I mean, there certainly are lots of sell and they store. Why would they do it?
But not sold or transferred to a customer on the lot.
Well, I, I think what he wants to do is put piles of mulch, buy it and sell it. All I want to do is make sure that the guy's not pulling off with a truck with wheelbarrow and is shoving and leaving with it, not ending with it.
Well, again, it's not even about sold. You're against the actual transfer of the mulch onto a private vehicle on that adjacent lot.
I guess I'm just concerned with...
That's what you gotta say. That's what you have to say.
I think that, I think Mr. Haddad has clarified what I'm just trying to say, and what I'm suggesting is you don't do it tonight.
Because of the... If I say anything, writing regulations is tricky business. It's not something to do on the back of an envelope and not something for you to consider without you all having the language in front of you. Fair enough.
Well, Mr. Chairman...
I'll be glad to help as much as I can. Just let me know what you want, the next meeting, email me, call me, write me, whatever, and maybe I'll have something in front of you for the next meeting. Fair enough.
Mr. Jowdy, then Commissioner Haddad.
I'd like to address a quick question to Plenary Director Mr. Elpern. Is there, and the, the public hearing is closed, is there a way that we could meet, or you could, someone from the board, meet with the applicant and try to hash this out, come up with the pros and cons of what this applicant might be able to do with this property? Will we be on that? This is not a little site-specific case.
I would... I'm not sure.
Correct.
And would it or not?
I would not recommend that.
Commissioner Haddad.
Then if I removed my concern and then went back in reverse and then asked Mr. Elpern again, is it the intention of this paragraph, is it the intention of this paragraph to allow sales of customers on that adjacent lot? For the record...
For the record, he's asking...
...that a customer...
Commissioner Haddad, it might help if you actually move the microphone towards you, he might be able to hear you better.
Then, then why don't we clarify, if I was to remove the words "but not sold," and then go back and ask Mr. Elpern, his intention of this paragraph was, is the definition of this paragraph to include a consumer going to that site, reaching in their pocket, handing over cash, and walking off with goods? Is it included that or is it restricted from that?
I would interpret it as meaning that it's only for storage.
Okay.
However, I think that others could interpret it another way. And so when you're writing these rights, you want to, if that's what you want to make certain will not happen, you have to be very specific in that regard. And that requires more language, and that's why I'm just reluctant to suggest that you just start making up language right now.
Commissioner Johnson, then Commissioner Malo.
Yes, that's, I think that the clarification and what Mr. Haddad said, and I think that Mr. Elpern is, is trying to make a recommendation here that we clarify this from everybody's standpoint before we move ahead with it, because I think that's part of my intent, which is, as I said in our discussion, is that it's a little too broad, it's a little too sweeping, and I'm, I'm not saying that maybe I went too far one way, Mr. Haddad's ideas may be fine, perhaps we should clarify it. We don't need, once again, to rush to judgment on anything here. If we get things clarified and get them the right way in front of us, we're all making an informed decision.
Commissioner Malo.
Mr. Elpern, just another quick question. I'm just curious if possibly the same intention that Commissioner Haddad is looking for, if instead of adding language to it, if we just removed the intended for retail sale from it, which says products as permitted in subsection 8 above and farm machinery, would that help clarify that it was a storage for storage intent and not a sales intent by not alluding to sales in this paragraph?
I don't think so. Because if you refer to 8 above, it talks about retail center products.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Haddad.
Mr. Chairman, whichever way this motion goes, I also think we should consider, if it doesn't get approved tonight, that we schedule a special meeting, because this, these people's season's going by, and I'm not talking about joining the many of your favorites, and I'm talking about moving the city's process along. So, you know, I noticed that we had a meeting cancellation, or we don't have any business that lets meeting, so, you know, I, I wouldn't want this thing to linger either. Now, with that said, I believe that while there's a motion and while there's a petition, I believe that this commission, you have made this decision, that you have the right to accept this if you want to, because we're restricting the petition, and we have been allowed since October of 2001 Connecticut State case law to do that. So if we choose to further restrict this without having a public hearing, we can't. If we loosen it up without a public hearing, we cannot do that. So I see the words "but not sold" or something along that line as a way to approve, to accept, if the gentleman would like to accept that as part of his motion, we could take action on that this evening. Chairman, you agree with that? And I understand what Mr. Elpern is saying as well, but we're not really, this isn't really rocket science, it's just, we want to, we want to insert a concept that further restricts the petition, which we are allowed to do on the floor.
Any other discussion? Mr. Johnson.
And I will agree with Commissioner Haddad. If Commissioner Stromiello is so inclined, I will withdraw what I had and go with that restriction and tighten it up to that extent and hope that this works out in the best interest of the public in the long run.
Mr. Manasek.
Yes, I would agree with both as well, both Mr. Haddad and what Mr. Johnson just said, if Mr. Stromiello would be willing to make that change in this motion.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Basically, what we're saying here is we don't want to see a cash register across the street. Is that right?
Retail sale.
I'm fine with that. We can change that to read "but not sold" there, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, as a seconder to the motion, I actually do believe that the way that this is worded does clarify that it's storage only and not a retail sale, so I will not continue to second the motion with, I did not approve, I did not, with my second, allow that change.
Can we do that? Does it have to be re-refosed and...
Let's slow down a second, okay? Yes.
We're rushing to judgment here.
You all have the amendment in front of you? Show your hands.
Yes, how many of you have amendments in front of you? All, all voting members?
First sentence, products intended for retail sale as permitted in subsection 8 above and farm machinery used for the operation of the farm may be temporarily, temporarily stored, comma, but not sold or picked up by customers, comma, on a lot zone. That makes absolutely no sense with machinery, but this is quick. Okay? Understand?
Can you repeat that, please? But, comma...
May be temporarily stored, comma, but not sold or picked up by customers, comma, on a lot zone already 40, which lies adjacent to...
I'd like to just take a straw poll on, on having a five-minute, or actually more like a 10-minute recess to go over some of this language and then reconvene. Okay.
So your, your...
Commissioner Haddad, if you have an opinion, I'd like to hear it, please.
Yeah, if you're gonna take, if you're gonna take a recess to digest the language and sit in the chairs, that's fine. If anybody's getting up, walking with this, it doesn't look great to the public, okay? So, it should be done.
Well, for...
That's why I asked first.
Basically, okay, basically what Mr. Elpern was suggesting, though, is just a clarification of the language to make it flow and make it make sense. So I think all that is, is just a syntaxual clarification of Mr. Haddad's, Commissioner Haddad's motion.
All right, without, without having to take a recess, I think we can do this. We'll go over the language, see if everyone agrees with the language, and if you're willing to accept it. Commissioner Malo.
Mr. Elpern, just, you, you advised us earlier, if we're gonna make some, make changes to this motion, to not vote on it tonight. With this recommended change, would you be comfortable with us voting this motion tonight, or would you still recommend either scheduling another meeting or waiting?
Well, I would suggest you schedule another meeting. I had a suspicion, though, that you were moving to, to vote on this, and that's why I suggested...
But I, myself, agree with Commissioner Haddad regarding the season and the timeliness of this motion. I don't necessarily see the reason to prolong the petition, like I said originally. I am, myself, am comfortable with the verbiage of this motion. And just for the record, I actually did not withdraw my second of the motion, I just did not agree to the change on it. So should it be changed? That amendment would need to be either approved, I mean, as a seconder, or be made as a motion to change, to amend.
Shall we proceed with reviewing the words you'd like, we'd like to try to insert?
I'm just suggesting, yes.
Okay, can we review those, please? Yes, please.
First sentence, so paragraph nine, products intended for retail sale as permitted in subsection 8 above and farm machinery used for the operation of the farm may be temporarily stored, comma, but not sold or picked up by customers, comma, on a lot zone already 40 or already 80, which lies adjacent to but separated from a lot containing a farm and/or retail sales operation by a public right, comma, provided the lot is in the same ownership as the owner of the existing farm and/or retail sales operation and is not less than 40,000 square feet in acre area. See?
The A...
Mr. Johnson.
So if we want to adopt said language, we have to make another motion...
No.
To adopt the language, no?
No, she still has the motion on the floor.
Mike.
What you need to do is get, make a friendly amendment, see if they'll accept it.
If, if the seconder doesn't accept it, where do we, I'm confused as to what happens at that point. He accepts it, he does not, what do we do then?
Let's cross the bridge when we get there.
His second, and then you can accept it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is everyone clear on the, the language that's being inserted? Does anyone have any questions?
Discussion.
I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on the language. You have a question, Mr. Jowdy? Commissioner Jowdy?
I understand the language, but I don't agree on it. I don't agree with the way that it was stated, because we're going back and forth, I mean...
Basically, the language is ensuring that no customers are to be on the property.
And we had the discussion before that maybe customers could go over, or maybe large items that could be picked up. We had talked about that, and then one of the commission members said, "no cash register on that side." So we're all over the place on this.
Just one line to clarify, that's all. Any other discussion? Commissioner Malo.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I did not intend to withdraw my motion. I seconded a motion which I firmly intend to support and I think is fine. So for, for the record, with me not withdrawing the motion, I would recommend either a motion is made to amend the motion, which I seconded, or we would proceed on the motion in its entirety.
We have, Mr. Johnson.
I would like to make an amendment to amend the motion to include the language, but, comma, but not sold or picked up by customers as put forth by Mr. Elpern, and to add to section nine.
We have a second? I second. Thank you, Commissioner Manasek. Okay, any discussion? Okay, so we've amended the motion. I believe we have to go to the, the original motioner and see if he accepts. We're voting to amend the motion, so without... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm fine with this new language.
Okay, let's go ahead. We'll, we'll vote on whether to accept the additional language to amend the motion.
He said yes. He's fine with it.
He's fine with it, but we still, we, we still need to, we still need to vote on the amendment to amend the Commissioner Stromiello's motion. Commissioner Jowdy, would you like to clarify any?
Yeah, no, I don't want to clarify the original motion on the floor. Was denied.
No, no, no.
Your motion was denied.
Commissioner Johnson's was denied, and Mr. Stromiello's is currently on the floor.
So we didn't make a motion to accept it. We're making a motion to accept it with these amendments.
We are, no, we are currently making, we are currently voting on accepting the amendment to Commissioner Stromiello's motion.
How about the motion to approve the petition?
We haven't gotten there yet. We're, we are approving, we're either, we're either approving or not approving the added language. Is everyone clear on that? Okay. Who made the, who made the motion? On whose side? Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner...
Yes.
Commissioner Manasek?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddad?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowdy?
No.
Commissioner Malillo?
No.
Commissioner Stramiello?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickey?
No.
And I will vote yes. Okay, that passes six to three. Okay, so we have an amendment to the original motion. Do you have any more discussion on the, on Commissioner Stramiello's motion? As amended. Thank you.
Just one more point of clarification. Mr. Elpern, with this amendment now, it is your recommendation, I believe, that you do, we do not act on this motion this evening? Based on the, on the verbiage change?
Any other discussion? Commissioner Johnston?
Just a, just a point of clarity. With the new language, does Mr. Stramiello make a new motion? So we just, so as we, as we stand, you amended his motion, so we move forward with a vote on that, provided there's no further discussion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Are we prepared to vote? Okay. Commissioner Stramiello?
Yes.
Uh, who is this second? Commissioner Malillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddad?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Manasek?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickey?
Yes.
And I too will vote yes. That passes unanimously, nine zero. Okay. On then item number two, ZBA Subcommittee, ZBA Application for Use Variants, uh, number 0820, His Vineyard, DVA, His Vineyard Christian Fellowship, 22 Shelter Rock Road, Lot Number L15006, Request to Vary-